Everybody, we're just about ready. Just John, the technician, filming tonight's meeting and doing this technology part. So it's up to the mayor and here we go.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So welcome everybody to the budgeted bucket tonight. And Josh has got a bunch of slides for us, so let's. Let's let Josh kind of give us a presentation. And then questions, we can write down questions and that way we can get through your presentation. And we come back and they can bottom mark you.
That sounds excellent. I'll be ready.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Josh.
All right. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, council members. Uh, so I've left the. Agenda up here, um, thought I'd change it up a little bit this time so we can just breeze on through this. Um, I do just quickly want to thank, you know, the finance team that I have around me. They've done an amazing job of helping with the biennial budget process in particular. I just want to thank Christine Basam. Uh, we may not see her ever, but she's behind the scenes with me doing a lot of really great work on this. So just wanted to extend my appreciation to them and to all the departments as well. Helping with this, very much a team effort. So I do just want to kind of do a kind of a mid biennial budget cycle check in for our budget themes. Um, as you may recall from a year ago, we introduced three themes for our biennial budget period. Um, fiscal sustain, financial sustainability, rather, investing in the future and information technology. We were making significant investments in, uh, the future and in, in IT. So what does that look like now that we're halfway through the biennial budget cycle? So we did just receive, um, from credit, from Moody's Credit Rating Agency, an affirmation of our AA two general obligation credit rating. So, um, you know, despite the fact that this was a pretty large borrowing year for us for bio solids in for Man Valley. Uh, Moody's affirmed our existing rating, which I think says a lot about, uh, kind of their assessment of financial management that, you know, you all as council are doing. And then you can see what our other credit ratings for our, uh, water revenue, wastewater revenue and electric revenue credit scores are. So we haven't had any updated ratings since I believe last year for, um, water. And then wastewater and electric, it's been some years since we've had those adjusted, as you can see on there. See twenty sixteen for wastewater and twenty eighteen for electric. So next time we go out to borrow revenue bonds for those utilities, we'll get updated credit scores. So one of the methodology changes that Moody's has implemented this year is that they're taking on more of a whole funds approach to when they assess our credit score. So what that means is they may not necessarily, for example, when we go to do a general obligation borrowing, they're not necessarily just looking at the general fund and, uh, reserves in the general fund. They're actually looking across the entire organization, across the entire city to assess our overall liquidity, overall debt coverage. Um, and assigning us a rating based on that. So we are actively monitoring cash flow across all of our funds. That's something we do on an ongoing basis roughly monthly, you know, and that's generally coincides with when you all receive the comptrollers before the council meetings is when we're kind of doing those, uh, those assessments. So then investing in the future, obviously Man Valley is the big one. So we have, um, provided for four and a half miles of water main, two and a half miles of sanitary sewer main, thirty nine hundred feet of road play, almost one mile of sewer, three stormwater management facilities and sixty three acres of conservancy in the corporate park. So, um, and, you know, rather than just looking at that investment in terms of the dollars, that's what those dollars actually represent out there. And then information technology, as you may recall from a year ago, uh, we were able to secure our insurance renewal update and we were able to, uh, realize some savings on our cybersecurity compared to what kind of the initial offer in the insurance renewal process was. We were able to not only get insured for cybersecurity coverage, but realized the savings that we did because of a number of steps, um, investments that we made in information technology. It's actually getting incredibly difficult for municipalities to get coverage period for cybersecurity. Um, we were fortunate and we have Mike and his team and IT to thank for that. So they implemented things like multi-factor authentication, endpoint detection and response software. So that's, you know, essentially other people's devices that are, you know, utilizing our wifi, things like that. There's actually the ability to detect any malware and things like that that might be on those devices that could conceivably find their way into our network. And then you can see some other things that they've implemented and some of those implementation efforts are ongoing. So, um, thanks to some significant investments you all as council have made in, in information technology. We, uh, we're probably more secure than ever and we're able to continue to receive cybersecurity coverage. So I do just want to then jump into the budget summary. So what these following slides are going to be is showing you what the original plan was for twenty twenty four and then show you what the adjustments were for each of our funds. So starting with the general fund. We had an original planned budget of just over thirteen million dollars. That's now a little less than thirteen point six million. And you can see below the table there where those differences come from. So it's largely that capital cash financing that we talked about, um, realizing the supplemental shared revenue that we'll be receiving and putting that to use for cash financing. Capital costs, there is an additional sixty thousand dollars in allocations being paid out to other funds that the, that we adjusted the general fund for. Four thousand dollars in the sales tax reserve, um, concept that I introduced during the fiscal plan workshops. We did, um, budget for a reduction of personnel expenses of forty eight thousand dollars and just a very slight decrease in, in the operations budget compared to what was originally planned for in twenty twenty four. And that's, that's how you arrive at the difference there. So that's, that's going to be the same structure I review for each of the funds on the following slides. So then for library, um, their overall budget has increased compared to the original twenty four plan by forty two thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Um, that comes from an increase in personnel costs of twenty three thousand three hundred and fourteen, a twenty five thousand dollar elevator power unit repair, which was shown in the twenty four through twenty eight capital improvement plan. And then a reduction of allocations being paid out to other funds of just over fifty five hundred dollars. So then the solid waste fund, there actually is no difference for this particular fund. But what I did want to review with you all is, um, as part of the twenty twenty three budget approval, we did increase the garbage collection fees from seventeen dollars and fifty cents per unit per month to nineteen dollars per unit per month. And you can see when you compare August of this year to August of last year in terms of cash on hand, um, the improvement that we've seen in the solid waste fund. So we are trending the right direction. I think when we had originally introduced the, a concept of increasing that fee, we'd said it may take two to three years to see that fund kind of come out of the deficit that it was in. Um, so you may not see it until, you know, year, from a year end perspective until year end of twenty five. But I would say we're certainly tracking the direction that we had anticipated, at least when you compare a year to year, um, to date view. So then for the electric budget, it's an overall increase of a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. Two hundred and eight thousand dollar increase to allocations. Now, two hundred thousand of that is actually a transfer to the city hall fund for the solar panels project that was identified in the twenty four twenty eight capital improvement plan. The remaining eighty six hundred dollars is just transfers out to various funds like IT, um, facilities maintenance. We are budgeting an operating reserve for the electric utility this year. So, um, that's a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar increase for that particular line compared to what was in the original twenty four budget. Now, keep in mind, that's operating reserve that's not taken into account expenses on capital. We then decreased personnel expenses by ninety two thousand dollars in operating expenses. That's primarily, if not solely purchased power by a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, we had a really high year for that last year, obviously, but it's starting to, to taper back off. So we did adjust there. Water, we are planning for a decrease of two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars compared to the original twenty four budget plan. Um, uh, about a thirteen hundred dollar increase in allocations. And then you can see the following decreases there to debt service, to personnel and to operating expenses. Wastewater will be going up by almost four hundred and seven thousand dollars. And the majority of this is from debt service related to the twenty twenty three borrowings that we just did for the bio solids facility. So now you start to see that debt service come online in twenty twenty four. And then an eighty eight thousand dollar increase to personnel. That's largely just due to existing employees that were reallocating some of the costs for between the water and wastewater utilities. So you actually see a kind of corresponding offset there. And actually, if you were to net the two together, it's a decrease of about fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then just small changes to allocations out and operating costs. So then those are kind of the major funds that I wanted to review and then provide some summary information of the others. So in, in a, on this slide, I'm going to get into kind of a forty thousand foot level view, but these are just some highlights of the table you're about to see. So in our special revenue funds, you'll see a fairly large increase for that category of funds. Now that's largely due to, um, TID nineteen. So we created a new fund for TID nineteen and it will incur about nine hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in debt service costs. Now, four hundred and seventeen thousand of that is actually offset by some bond premium that we've received with our issuance this year. You don't always get that, um, this year we did and we got about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of it. It will actually be enough premium to completely offset our interest payments for twenty twenty four. So what will be left then will need to be covered with advances from the funds you see below that, just like we discussed during the TID nineteen project plan and during the fiscal plan. And then there will actually be about thirty two thousand dollars left in premium that will be able to apply, in fact, we have to apply to our twenty twenty five interest payments. So, and then there were adjustments, uh, for general capital. Um, for South Lawson Lane, there's an increase of six hundred and ten thousand dollars. You would have seen this come through the CIP process, actually. Um, and so just as a reminder, that is state and ARPA funded. There is an increase of five hundred thousand dollars in twenty four for fire station design. We brought that up to, to twenty twenty four in the CIP, uh, funded with supplemental shared revenue being provided by the state starting next year. And then three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars for handsome land acquisition that would not proceed unless we receive a, a grant for that particular project. And that's identified in the CIP as well. So then for capital equipment, we did actually reduce planned twenty twenty four expenses by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars by pushing or delaying rather a street sweeper replacement into a future year. Um, so I think that was like the Timco six hundred unit. And, um, we were planning on a geo node or a geo bond type of financing for that. And just as we talked about during the fiscal plan with, um, levy targets and constraints and borrowing targets and constraints. This is one that, you know, we talked to public work staff and they said, yep, we, you know, we, we can delay this. And so that's exactly what we're doing. Um, and then two hundred thousand dollars in the city hall fund for solar panels and an additional ninety five thousand dollar adjustment in the IT fund for laptop security cameras and network switching. So then kind of zooming out to that forty thousand foot level I just talked about, you can see what the breakdown is by, by fund type. Um, and you can see at the very bottom then how we went from an original planned budget of forty nine point eight million to an updated planned budget of fifty three point one million. And, um, most of the, most of the changes there are, are due to the, the various things that I just reviewed on the last couple, couple of slides. So then getting into fund balance a little bit, we talked about this quite a bit through fiscal plan. So just as a reminder, uh, we, we are currently projecting that we will likely cover right around our fifty percent target at the end of twenty twenty three. Uh, so we're well above our minimum of forty percent fund balance that our policy provides for. And then we'll be really close to that fifty percent target. And then we do expect in twenty twenty four, based on plans, based on assumptions, that we'll actually start to exceed that, just like we talked about at the fiscal plan workshop. Um, that's not because we're budgeting for surplus in the general fund. It's because of the advanced repayments that are owed to the general fund from various TIDS that come in at year end. So you don't actually even book those as operating revenues. That's really more of an accounting balance sheet adjustment you see at the end of the year. So, um, that's how, that's how you arrive at, at what you see on this slide here. So then jumping into levy, um, this is compared to the original twenty twenty four budget, the adjustments that we've made to the tax levy by, by category. Now, keep in mind too, that when you see general fund, that includes six hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance. Um, I know we, we had to kind of make that clarification at one of the fiscal plan workshops. So that, that five point two million you see there under the updated twenty four column includes six hundred thousand for street maintenance. So overall, compared to what we originally planned for in twenty twenty four, uh, levy for the general fund goes up by three point two eight percent for library by three point eight one percent. Um, they do have debt service that gets paid off this year, so they won't have that payment starting next year. And then as we've discussed in the CIP and in the fiscal plan, there are a couple of borrowings that we anticipate for the library in future years, like twenty twenty five and twenty six, I believe. Debt service will go up by five point seven five percent compared to what was originally planned. And then, uh, cash or capital costs actually decreases by fourteen percent. And this would have been as identified in the capital improvement for an overall increase for, of a levy, um, of two point three one percent compared to what was originally planned in twenty three twenty four budget. So then just to review current levy versus levy limit, um, saw this slide at the fiscal plan workshop, but a reminder, we, we do currently estimate, um, a, a decent amount of capacity remaining in twenty twenty four. I believe it's about seven hundred thousand dollars. But over the following years, that gets chipped away at slowly but surely. So by twenty twenty eight, we are still, um, estimating we'll only have about a hundred thousand dollars in capacity. So nothing really has changed there. I just wanted to provide that reminder. So then talking about proposed net levy, because that net levy metric is one that I know council is interested in, in receiving. So, um, you can see what the, uh, gross levy is represented by the bar chart portion of the graph here. You can see what gross levy has been historically. It was close to five percent in twenty twenty compared to the levy in twenty nineteen. And then that gross levy increase was about two percent in twenty one, about two percent in twenty two, jumped over five percent for this year. Um, and then we had originally estimated that it would be a gross levy increase of one point six two percent for next year. That's increased to three point seven eight. The original net levy increase, when you take into account the portion of your levy growth that comes from net new construction, you essentially net that out, you say this is, this is your levy growth net of, your levy increase net of growth. We originally had planned for that to be just under one percent and the updated number is two point zero six percent. So we're still, as you can see, represented by that kind of thick line across the, the four percent row on the chart there. I mean, we're still well under our understood net levy increase target that council, um, that so far we're, you know, rolling with, I guess, for lack of a better word. So, um, and that's, as we talked about at the fiscal plan workshop, that's still a plan for the next five years is that we're going to try to keep that net levy increase no higher than four percent for any one year. So then the estimated tax bill, and again, this is assuming Pierce County residents, excluding the tax increment financing portion of the city levy. This is just the city levy, so general fund, library, capital, cash financing and debt service. The estimated tax bill for those, those city services for Pierce County residents, um, in twenty twenty three, it was one thousand four hundred forty eight dollars and that's based on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. We'd originally planned in twenty four for that, uh, to be a nine dollar increase or a tax bill of one thousand four hundred fifty seven. And that's actually now increasing by forty five dollars or a tax bill of one thousand four hundred ninety three dollars. Um, and I know that you're probably thinking two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home seems low, given what's going on right now. And that's, that's because when you look at the number of residential parcels in Pierce County and the assessed value of all those parcels, that's actually what the average still is. You'll see that change next time we do a community wide revaluation, but, um, that hasn't caught up with the inflation that we've experienced over the last year or two yet. So by the next, by the next time we do this, that may be a different number. That based on our current assessments, that's still kind of the average value. So then, um, transitioning out of a conversation about levy and into one of utility rates. As you all know, we have been working with WPPI Energy and Trilogy Consulting to complete what we call cost of service studies. So those essentially look at your net operating income as a percentage of what they call your net investment rate base, which is just a fancy way of saying the value of the assets of your utility. So you look at basically how much is your utility worth in terms of assets? What's your net operating income and how much of a percent of that total up there does that represent? And that's your rate of return. So that's, that's really all that there is to this concept of a rate of return. So, um, where we're at right now is, and then they provide some recommendations for us. So the electric utility, right now we have current average monthly electric bill and that's out of our biennial budget book of ninety six dollars. And what WPPI Energy is, is recommending, now we haven't, we haven't done a rate case. This is just providing you with updates and we'll get more feedback and guidance from later. But what WPPI Energy is, is recommending right now would be an increase to about ninety nine to one hundred dollars per month for electric. For the water utility, it's a current average annual water bill of about a hundred and eighty dollars a year. And in this case Trilogy Consulting, um, they're recommending an increase to two hundred and seventy to two hundred and ninety dollars per year for, uh, a water bill. Average water bill. And then sewer utility, your current average annual sewer bill or wastewater bill is five hundred and forty dollars. And Trilogy is recommending an increase to five hundred and sixty to five hundred and seventy dollars. So that's again, based on them looking at where we think the value of the utility is going. What is our net operating income right now, which of course the story there is inflation chipping away at that. And essentially how much of a percentage of that total value of utility assets does that revenue, um, represent? And right now with the PSC, so the PSC regulates the electric and water utilities. They have a benchmark rate of return set for the whole state of six point two percent. Um, and I believe our electric current authorized rate of return for electric utilities, four point nine. And for the water utility, it's, it's right around that same number. So, um, again, these are preliminary recommendations. We have not modified the twenty four budget based on these at all. We're not assuming that we proceed, these aren't baked into having to, you know, we haven't balanced our budgets with these. We're not relying on these revenue, uh, recommendations at all. And of course you and the utility advisory board will have future opportunities for us to talk, talk more about this. Um, and I think we plan on, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we may even have a presentation from Trilogy at some point. Um, to talk about the, the water and sewer recommendations as well.
I'm trying to make Josh choose if it's not, but it could appear. These processes do take six to nine, twelve months.
So we, just to get to this point, um, there's been, again, finance team's been wonderful. They put in a lot of work just to get to this point. So there's been a lot of data requests from both WPPI and Trilogy. Um, the next step would be actually proceeding with, well, the next step is to have more of a conversation with you and the utility advisory board about it. A future step would be to actually initiate the rate case application for electric and water with the PSC. And then from that point, as Kevin said, that's a six to nine to maybe twelve month process. It really just depends on the PSC's workload, so. More to come on this, more conversation. So then just some other considerations, um, such as the twenty twenty four capital improvement. And you can see that there's an all funds total in twenty twenty four of seventeen point four nine million. This would have been identified in the CIP already, so shouldn't, shouldn't necessarily be a surprise. Now, again, I am including the bio solids facility just because the majority of that project won't begin in earnest until twenty twenty four. So, um, we borrowed it this year. Definitely could have considered this, you know, more of a twenty three expense, but I thought most of the project will be underway next year. Let's throw it in for, for twenty four. And then there will be the South Lawson Lane reconstruct, which is state and ARPA funded. I talked about that particular project a little bit ago with the increase we included. Fire station design, north substation transformer, you can see the rest there. And you can see the funding sources on the right hand side. So you can see revenue backed general obligation bonds, which we've already done, state and ARPA funded, supplemental shared revenue, revenue bonds, revenue bonds, utility, utility and grants. So there, in terms of our large capital expenses for twenty four, what you, what you aren't seeing is levy. So pretty grant dependent, borrowing dependent, development dependent. Um, and of course we would come back to you when the time comes for any of these projects to, to get permission to proceed with, with them when the time arrives. But this is what we've currently planned for. So then after a couple of years of, um, quite a bit of borrowing, in twenty twenty four, this is all we currently contemplate, um, going to market for is. And these are development dependent projects, so this may not necessarily even happen in twenty twenty four, but million dollars of revenue bonds for the electric utility. So I mentioned earlier credit ratings, um, the last time we received one for the electric utility, I think on that slide I'd said twenty sixteen or something like that. If we actually proceeded with these, we would get an updated credit rating for the utility next year as part of the borrowing process. So then council actions, so process and next steps. Uh, right now we have a total twenty twenty four budget of fifty three point, almost two million. Will be asked to approve by functional area and fund. So you're approving by fund for funds that aren't the general fund. And then within the general fund, it's by functional area. So it's admin, it's leisure services, it's public safety, public works, things like that. Um, and then you're obviously providing authority to staff to implement the budget plan with the appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty four. We also anticipate bringing an updated fee schedule before you for twenty twenty four as well as part of kind of this overall budget approval package. And then you'll, you'll also be asked to approve the tax levy for tax year twenty twenty three, collectible in twenty twenty four, as, as you recall, we collect in arrears here. So even though we're getting paid in twenty four, it's for tax year twenty twenty three. Um, and that is an increase of three point seven eight percent from the tax levy tax year twenty two collected this year or a two point zero six percent, um, net, net of growth increase. Um, and then of course, as I just said, at the end of the day, we'll come, we'll come before you next year to seek approval for expenses as needed. So we're just approving the budget, approving the plan. We'll come back to you for further approval to actually implement with certain projects next year. So then first reading is scheduled for our next meeting, October twenty fourth. Second reading, um, and fee schedule, we have scheduled for November tenth. So that, that is it. I'd be glad to take questions.
Yes. Questions?
It's like when you get the list.
No, they're not all, they're not all for now. But I'll ask one, and maybe Kevin help me. What's the ROI on the solar panels for city hall?
Yeah, I think we have.
They were still about break even, so it's more of a demonstration than a reduction in the electric bill. And that's why we didn't recommend them for the library, because on the faces of library roof that could, could have them.
If we didn't do them, would we be losing any efficiencies or anything? I'm just asking for a sake of understanding.
Um, so I don't think so. I mean, if there's still the chance that you all vote to raise electric rates a lot more than we expect you to, and then the math starts to change on the solar. But given what we have had for a history of electric rates in town, we're not expecting that. You and me and council is gonna, does everybody understand what I'm saying about that? I mean, you, when you do these paybacks, you're, you're trying to, to generate a projection of the electric bill based on what you know about the rates. So if the rates are eleven cents kilowatt hour now, you have a, you have a monthly bill at each location. And then you try to figure out, all right, what electric are we going to generate? What's the buyback tariff? They do all that math to try to figure out what the capital cost is for those panels. So it's possible that we could be losing out on savings if rates go higher than what we have in there for expectations. It's also possible you're missing savings if the bids for those panels are lower than what we anticipated. So those are the two main factors when we're looking at. those are the two main factors when we're looking at solar. Not to mention, so right now is a good time. The other thing you miss is opportunity because one of the best times to do solar installations is after you do your re-ruff. So that's why the library, so we haven't given up on the library, but we're looking at a lot of grant opportunities to try to basically get that cost subsidized. Otherwise it doesn't help library operating much. It doesn't really, it's whatever cost you may have saved in electric bill, you're paying a capital lease or a debt service payment. But I, I remember that we're still talking about paybacks to like seventeen, eighteen years on a twenty year warranty.
I want to say the last time it was proposed, unless there was a time and I missed it, would have been when the building was, went out. Yep. It was a twenty or that.
Yeah, I think then it was even more.
It was worse.
It was, yeah. It was more years. It was like twenty seven years or something. The panels were only warranted. Twenty years. Panels have gotten better and cheaper. And electric rates are held a little bit. So, so I think people thought electric rates would go up faster and panel prices would stay. So that's kind of where we're at. We can get your specific answer though because Jenna and Mike Noreen, Jenna from W P P I and Mike did the analysis for both of those. Yeah, they looked at which, I don't know which facing. Which, which sides were facing. They look at tree cover. They look at access. We have more flat roof here. So there's a little bit less expensive installation.
Well, and I don't want to signal hostility towards it. It's just understanding if there's anything regarding payback at all. It forces up twenty Lawson.
Yeah, we're not doing projects at this point that we don't think have a payback. But this one is not something that we just say, oh, it's a no brainer. We gotta do it. At least that's not what we saw five months ago or six months ago when we did the analysis. And I know the library director had applied for a specific grant. So there's still some grants out there for public buildings, for schools, for libraries and we're still going to look at that.
No, thank you.
And then we do have to do a rate, we do have a holdback. You know, we, everybody who's a rate payer pays for the powerful choices program. And so it is beneficial and we can use that money locally. We've tended not to use it for ourselves. But we've had, in a couple of cases we have. So this would be another case where you'd be using some of that tariff to invest in the project that's owned by the city. I think we did one other one. We might have done the fine bubble irrigation at the wastewater plant. I mean, there's been a couple of powerful choices projects we've done. And I think that's where we, that's where we landed on for funding source, right?
Yep.
I think it was a small way to the way.
Question for you, Kevin. Was there, are there more discussion on a proposed daylight savings average?
A daylight savings average.
For utility rate. Then we talked about something like that.
Are you talking, I'm like, I'm updating your private Kevin's language.
And we do look at residential utility bill and identify those companies who might find it advantageous to switch to, to that rate. And we do contact them a lot down there. Our conversion rate hasn't been real high, but there are some people that come over. But we do try to identify. May, I don't know.
How does that affect our budget? Like?
Not greatly. It's just not great.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else have questions?
Oh, I have more than no one else.
I have a, I, I do have a, something I wanted to bring up. I talked about other meeting of ours. This goes back to when we talked about having, having improvement plans. And I had suggesting that concept of creating nesting strategic meetings. And I've talked about that with our administrator before, where it would essentially, we'd create a workshop when needed, if needed. For a subject matter that might be difficult to bridge gaps between departments. In this case, like I'm looking at having if, if you can follow where I'm going with this, where you'd have the library board and city staff work together to consider analyzing what the optimal full-time employee footprint for them should be. And you'd have the report generated and given to the council thereon. And essentially the council and the mayor, we'd all be invited to watch if we wanted to. But we wouldn't be participating. We'd be able to see the internal dialogue, give us a better feel for the different needs assessments, the discussion that goes on that we don't normally get to see. So I, I think that'd be valuable for council members here as well. I'm curious what other people's thoughts might be on something like that.
I think I'd need more information about what exactly specifics, I mean, I kind of, the concept I understand was.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to think about it too. And one of the, one of my perspectives of what we do is kind of high level policy setting. And I'm hesitant about getting involved in you know, the day-to-day stuff that we hire excellent people to do. I appreciate the reports that we get. You know, but you know what they say about if, if you knew how hot dogs would made, were made, you'd never eat one. It's like, I'm not sure how much of the process I feel is appropriate for us. I mean, because the conversation we're there, the conversations didn't actually change.
And I think, I think staff does a pretty good job already of, if it's an important issue, getting together with whatever department it is, organization it is, whatever is going on to talk to them, work out a solution. I mean, I guess if something's going on that you think you need, you want to be invited to, they can do that. I don't, I guess I'm not sure. Do you mean we would, we would, we would tell staff that we think you need to have a meeting with this group or this organization?
Yeah, it'd be similar to a workshop like we're having now where they could have just dialogue with each other. So to be helpful, whether we're there or not. Not meant, we're not supposed to participate, but we'd be able to watch them like they're watching us to understand how they're getting the direction they're getting and how they can best make use of the money that we give them. I know you had mentioned that they had not taken the city staff's advice. And we don't really know why they did or why they didn't. But a strategic initiative in that sense would help us analyze and understand that as a council, why they make the decisions they do and how we can be the best team as a city.
If they have a question on, on the utility rates, the spread between what we're charging and what they're recommending us to charge, why is such a big difference?
So it, it really comes down to the way they set. So speaking of how the meat, it's the sausage gets made here. So the way the P S C sets the benchmark rate of return is they look at it's the standard impores twenty year high yield index for municipal bonds. And they look at what it, the current number is for a given month. And they add one to two percent on top of that. So right now, based on, I think the latest figure was that they're utilizing was from April. And it was four point one seven percent, the, the, the rate on that index fund. So they took four point one seven percent. They added two percent on to that. And they rounded it up to the nearest tenth. And they said six point two is our rate of return benchmark. And the, kind of the underlying theory of that, as was explained by a P S C auditor was it provides for sufficient debt coverage because they're indexing it to a, you know, municipal bond index. So it provides sufficient debt coverage and operating margins by adding that, that two percent on top of it. So good, bad and different. That's, that's how they arrive at their number. And given increases in rates that we've seen over the last year, when you compare that new benchmark that takes into account those increasing rates to what our last authorized rate of return was, that's where you see that spread. So, and we're not, for what it's worth too, we're not actually meeting the authorized rate of return right now either. So that's, that's what they said, you know, you're capped at this rate of return. And just again, given how inflation kind of eats into your operating margins over time, and it has been a while since we've done a rate case that was authorized and implemented. You have sort of seen a steady erosion of that net operating income. So we're, we are below even what was authorized for us.
When was our last lecture rate case? Kevin, was it?
It was in twenty.
Twenty twenties when it went into effect. We applied in nineteen.
But, but prior to that, we hadn't done one since like ten years.
Yeah.
And so we kind of discussed maybe rate cases every four to five years to kind of prevent the big step.
And Scott, they have a thing called expedited rate case. You can't do that more frequently. And for water, we were attempting to do that, but our rate of return was too great for the first few years that we weren't eligible. And when we did become eligible, then when we were eligible, it was past the rate of the expedited rate case.
So that'll be something we'll bring up when we're talking about with the U A B and the rate, rate cases. We may want to try to get ourselves in a position where you, remember, we're asking the P S C on two of these. We're not telling. So they, they can lower or raise the rates that you submit. And believe it or not, they have in many cases across state raised the rates higher than the council or the utility board was willing to do it. And they have that authority to do it, but, and it's more common than you think. So that's why when we talk about the targets, we could internally tell you, we advise that you don't need to have a six percent rate of return. Our plant is in good shape. I mean, it's asset valued really well. And where our cash position is good. And so four, setting a four percent rate of return is acceptable from a fiscal management standpoint. And, and the P S C can have none of that. They can just say, well, we don't care. Like, that's all fine, Danny, but we've got our spreadsheet. So it's not, part of that rate of return is just them trying to mimic what they're doing for investor on utilities. So they're saying, well, why would an investor put their money into an investor on utility when they can just put it into some index fund or something and make a better return? And so for some reason, they're trying to make an equivalency argument with a municipally owned and operated utility. So it's, it it's not super logical in my mind, but it's, that's just kind of the operating model. So we probably will like to get you in a situation where you can do these expediated rate case, where you might just do it with a budget every year. Just you look at you know, Josh shows you the benchmarks and the indexes and where ratios are. And we say, right, makes sense for us to do one percent or half percent or something. Or fifty cents a month or whatever on these. Keep in mind sewer utility is unregulated. So we can do that every year. I think we probably should. Sewer is one we probably should just, as part of the annual budget, say here's what we think the, that would be. That's not what we've tended to do because the U A B and the council historically have seemed to like packages. They don't like it when the big increases, but they don't necessarily like to have like electric one year and sewer the next year and water the following. So that may have changed. And we'll get that feedback from you when we go through the rates process.
I have a question. On the slides you were showing, the adjustments for them. There were several of them where there, you know, it was the anticipated cost of personnel was decreased. Do you have? Do you have like the, the, maybe I missed it, maybe it was on the slide. The overall change in personnel between the, you know, what was anticipated and what? And, you know, can you flush that out?
Yeah. I mean, I think a really good example that actually is, if you look at I make sure. Yeah, but you shifted personnel, but we're supposed to explain that. So that, so when you kind of take that hundred and thirteen thousand decrease for water and kind of again, because I was talking about how some of, some of the exercises is allocating costs for those employees because they're, they're kind of cross trained. They perform various functions. So you're fairly regularly adjusting, have they spent more time in water? Have they spent more time at sewer? And you adjust. So when you kind of net those two together though, you take the hundred and thirteen thousand decrease for water, the eighty eight thousand dollar increase for wastewater. That amount that you're netting to is representative of an employee who would have been on our health insurance plan and is no longer on. So it's turnover, it's, we haven't budgeted for an increase in F T Es. In fact, as we talked about in the fiscal plan workshop, we've got positions that are, are vacant right now.
That's what your, is that what your question is, is what are the F T E that we're not budgeting?
Yeah. Can you go back, yeah, to the water? Because there were, there were other personnel like there. Well, there even more personnel. But I was just wondering how it, how it all messes out because there seems to be a lot of change in person, in personnel allocations.
Yep.
And, you know, does it all even out? And, and I know that we've got positions that we have, haven't been filled and may not be.
Yeah. So there's so there's various things happening. I, I could get you the list of kind of how it's all allocating and breaking out. It's so it's, part of it is implementation of the class and comp plan. So that's going to factor into it. We do have turnover where there were more tenured employees that have turned over less tenured employees coming on. So in that case, you'd see a decrease. Changes in health insurance plans, like I mentioned, whether they're going from a, a single or an employee plus one plan to a family or vice versa. So those are really the updates that we made. I, I don't know if that's any more helpful.
What about the positions as they relate to the fiscal plan? So what I think you saw in the fiscal plan, like a hundred and nineteen F T E at the beginning and a hundred and twenty F T E at the end. But then we talked about how some of those positions, there's going to be a minus and an add. So I don't, we probably have a, we can create a list to show you what it's doing, but we're, we're focusing those reductions in planned, we're planning them through attrition. So it's not planned layoffs. But we're planning those in admin, finance, I T, H R. So those are the primary reductions in F T E.
Administration.
Yes.
From my understanding, those are going to roll over to police and public work. Is that right?
We, we have not committed the council to rolling those into anything. The fiscal plan is allowing you to determine what are the priorities of the city going forward. Without those changes, you would have little flexibility to do anything. So what I understood from the council and from our fiscal plan discussions and that is that you want to have that flexibility. So I'm giving you advice as the administrator that we made significant investments in those areas for specific strategic deliver purposes. Some of those have come to an end. Or we've completed the work that was necessary to get us to the level we expected to be at. And now we're going to shift our focus to the line service areas, which we're seeing big increases in demand, right? Our acreage is up like seventy some percent since to, I don't remember what the chart I had today that you gave me. Over a period of five to nine years. We just see these indicators, lane miles, park acreages, police calls, fire calls, recreation registrations. Those are all up. And so I think you've asked me to try to look at what I think the trends are and where things are going and try to get you in a position where you can make investments in the areas where you've seen that. So that's what that plan is. But if I had to commit today, I would say that's, it's likely park maintenance, street maintenance and, and law enforcement are the biggest. Look to me to be the ones coming down the pike, needing, needing the most F T E and we're going to meet the expectations that, that you and the community have. But I'm also I'm not willing to rule out efficiencies or other things that might be gained over time or automation. I just think it's probably not. We're not likely to get the automation gains to be able to free up a police officer, you know, we're not going to have a little drones taking the reports or.
We can't get a giant Roomba.
With the streets. I, I've been, my staff knows I've been advocating for a Roomba for the city for at least a decade. Like they're absolutely.
They're on sale.
Absolutely. It should be a city sized Roomba. There are city sized lawn bots or whatever you call them now. But I think people are really scared to just let them go. But they're big. They're not, they're not the little ones. There's table sized mowers that are. Mostly used at fenced in athletic field areas right now.
Why don't your kids do this?
Yeah, I, so all kidding aside, we're, we're basically directly impacting the overhead support. And it'll impact your ability. We talked about it when we did strategic initiatives. And I said, you can't, we can't do the level of initiatives that we've been doing because we're not going to have the people to support it. Like, we can't even get the throughput of doing the reports and coordinating the, the public meetings and all that because we're just not going to have that staff. And so you may, the council may decide, no, we didn't let, we tried that for a few years. We want H R, admin, I T. Because we want to go back to that model. So that's not my prediction, but you'll have that flexibility. Really, when you talk about the twenty five and four, that makes sense. But yeah, I'm not, there's no cards whole hell back. I think it's going to be maintenance and law enforcement are. That's just where I see the biggest increases in service demand.
I completely understand where you're coming from about the needs for police and, uh, expanding our public works for snow removal as well as maintaining our parks. I also think that there are needs that go unmet at the library from what I've heard with the report. Now, I don't know the history of like other council members who've been here longer might have. That's why I really appreciate their perspective, what they shared in our last meeting. Um, and that's part of why I think we need a strategic, um, type of workshop for these, in your department type of discussions. I think without having real discussions, you don't get real answers. And it's unfortunate. Um, but I also think that if you look at their needs and what they're telling me and what we're seeing, I don't think we'd be able to do everything they're saying. Even if we wanted to right now. That's the difficulty of having a tight budget in this type of economy. Um, but when you look at it, um, I know they probably would be more comfortable with like, you know, having one or two more employees that are full-time. That'd be around two hundred thousand, but I don't think that's in the cards. I think you could look at something like, um, when you, when you start looking at. What's a reasonable percent of how you can help them? And you look at that levy and what it could be. Um, you could look at something like, let's say, a library aid. And a library aid would be something around twenty six thousand. A library aid is double the cost of having one page. You could, and theoretically, they could hire two pages. It would allow them to have some flexibility. They could choose to use that for raises. They could choose to go after that. They could choose it to use it to make their library function work. But to be perfectly clear, that's not one percent. That's not even half of a percent. It's a very small amount that would go along based to help the libraries. And that would be twenty six thousand, like I said, which is nothing in comparison to the other departments I just described. But we know all these services are critical and needed. I can also tell you that we can probably find twenty six thousand very easily when you look at the entirety of our budget. It'd be easier to parse out from different parts. So if it's something people are interested in, I think it's something that we should take a serious look at and have some reflection about what it would mean to our community. Would it mean the art gallery? Would it mean historical exhibits? Would it mean, uh, raises to people who need them? Would it mean, uh, balancing debt, helping to get maybe different parts that they, they need for their master plan? They're going to be doing and asking a lot, for a lot of donations, working on their master plan in the future. Um, if, if we can help them a small way, they can focus on that as a goal. Uh, and that, and in that sense, we're not going to be able to give them everything they want, but this would be, help them balance that workload so they can. Be where they need to be for our community, I think.
I, I, I've been thinking about this library thing. I mentioned to staff, I mentioned it to Diane as well, but. One of the thoughts that I had is if there's a two hundred thousand dollar gap at the, at the library is to explore. Uh, the same mechanism we use for green energy blocks and making a voluntary, uh, collection on the utility bill. Um, if the math is right, two hundred thousand, five dollars a month, makes three hundred and thirty-three. Uh, uh, residential donations per utility bill. And, uh, uh, the library can, uh, sort of. Uh, do that campaign and can get to their two hundred thousand by using that mechanism. But that's the mechanism we have to discuss and explore. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but, um. That would be the, that would be the mechanism I would propose that we talk about is, is, uh. The, the library board, there'd be something that fall in the library board, ask the library board to, to be vigilant about helping raise those funds and. Uh, through the utility bill.
Is it helpful, Meredith? I mean, so I can comment on wherever I have a little line particular. So the, the library has made a request to amend the M O U. I've probably been involved in no less than fifty emails in the last thirty days, including in-person meetings. With the mayor, with the vice president, with many of you. So that's another, you know, the, the library is a concern. I've understood that that's a concern. Um, I think you've asked me to be committed to a solution that aligns, you know, basically allows the library to continue to operate, good service to the community. In the context of the fiscal plan, which says it can't be a deficit-funded operation, right? They, they have a finite amount of fund balance right now. They have desires as far as operating model, and we have to try to figure out a way over five years where they don't go into a deficit and, you know, can't make payroll. Um, and we also have, I think it's important by the end of that five-year fiscal plan to have them in an operating mode. Supported by the, by the ongoing revenues that are, are provided. So instead of. Over the next five years, I don't think that's going to work. I think we're going to have to use fund balance to support operations for some of those five years. Even if the city does a significant increase in its, um, its revenue, it's also going to require the, the library to, to change its operating model. If that's the path we go. It, it's not, it hasn't been sustainable. I've been very transparent with my concerns about it for a decade. Um, I had a meeting today with the H R director and finance director, and she said, we had this meeting eleven years ago. I said, yep, we did. Um, just different, different folks. So I've been, I think I've been in it just a little bit longer than some folks have, but. The current fiscal plan is not approved by the council. It comes back in front of you. The expectation, you saw the nine hundred for, for twenty twenty-four. There isn't the model where it's nine hundred for twenty twenty-five like I had planned. Um, there's got to be some additional fund. Levy that goes towards the library. Right now, it looks like at least seventy thousand increase, um, for that five-year period. To get them to a point where at the end of that five-year period, we can have a chance to be. Where the operating revenues and operating expenses that we currently identify would work. So. But that's not going to mean everything is status quo. It doesn't, doesn't work that way. I don't see a sustainable way forward. So. That's either going to be counseled by, uh, me telling the library board, here's what, what the allocation is. You can figure out a plan. Or it's us saying, here's what the allocation is and we're willing to help. And frankly, we've run some scenarios and here's some options for you to choose from. But they don't have to take any of that advice. They can, you know, you allocate the money and they get to determine what, what happens with the money. So. Um, that, that's the plan for the M O U at this point is for us to, to communicate back, hey, yep, we're fine with the M O U. And then give them a prediction of what we think the revenues are going to look like, and then, um, take it from there and offer our help like we have. That we can help work through scenarios and figure it out. And it's not a scenario, you know, you can increase, there's different scenarios that will allow you to increase hours, headcount and others, but you have to make changes to the model. So it'll, it would change the dynamic and the composure of full-time versus part-time, all those things that I think many of you have already talked to library board about. If you want to maintain a model of five full-time libraries, librarians operating exactly the way it is, that this, this budget. Will do that for twenty-four because they have fund balance to rely on, but it's not going to get you to twenty twenty-nine. And I don't advise that you make two hundred or three hundred thousand dollar additional commitments in revenue because it's not going to work and blow the whole. Blow the whole thing up. Because there isn't the capacity for you to do that and maintain your other priorities. Other areas of the city are already going to be asked to do, and without, you know, with all those F T E reductions in order to free up that money. So. That's something, you know, if the council wants to track the workshop, that's fine. Otherwise, the plan for us is. I'm continuing to work. I meet with the mayor on a regular basis. I've met with the library board. We'll continue to do that. We'll continue to answer every inquiry we get for, for data and we'll provide it so they have the best information to make decisions. But right now, it looks like we're getting to that. We're never getting close to ten percent of levy. In the five-year fiscal plan, it's over ten percent in every, in every, every year. Um, and we're talking about a levy of nine, nine-five.
Yeah.
By twenty twenty-eight and, and absolute best case scenario, we're getting the levy for the library is like nine hundred and sixty, nine hundred and seventy. So you're, you're well above that ten percent, even five years out. Because I'm not trying to starve them or, or make, um, so it can operate.
So what we talked about today was I thought I'd make a plan. You and Josh had come up with a couple of different scenarios. Can you kind of write something up basic and easy for the council and meet and, and extend it to us? So we have a, you can kind of look at that.
Yep.
I think it's the best way to go, but if, if we could get that, everybody can look at it and get an idea of what we're thinking.
Yeah, I, again, I just, not to, I don't want to dispute anything that's been said by anybody, but I would just. I guess I want to reinforce that this is not a lack of communication or dialogue. I, I fundamentally disagree if that's what people think is occurring. I mean, there is. Lots of dialogue and communication going on to try to find a solution, both by the library board and by city staff. But it's, there is no easy solution. And, and we're not going to just shake the couch cushions and come up with what the library board wants. Or has requested as an initial, what I believe is their initial negotiating position. So I, I don't even think there's an expectation that the library board thinks that we're going to just throw two hundred thousand dollars to its library. And I don't think it's feasible unless you want to have some real serious discussion about what else would be kind of off the table for services.
Well, I think you said and said stuff about we can get a better idea of what you guys, what you, Josh, you're thinking.
And, and I don't think the urgency is the twenty twenty-four budget. It's always, always better to deal with it now than later. But I don't, I think just saying we have to figure it out now is, is arbitrary. It's. I would absolutely love to have someone go, yep, that's the solution. We're all done, but I don't, I don't see a good way. We, we just, there's things that are coming up already for the twenty twenty-four budget that we're just going to have to figure out, like bodying cameras for the officers. And, and best laid plans, we still have to find, we're going to have to find that twenty-five thousand or whatever it takes to do that. Because that's just a priority. That's time has come. We've been unsuccessful with the grants. We've got some operational and risk assessment issues that we want to address, and so that, I think, rises to the top. And so it's not, it's, oh, we do have flexibility within a forty million dollar budget, but there's a list of things lined up. That would like to take that flexibility. And you are the ultimate arbiters of whether we staff line it up the way you want or not. So you, you're voting on the fiscal plan, which you'll be able to send a message about what your expectations are for the distribution of funds over that five-year period. And then you're also going to, you're being asked to approve this budget. So if you think that this budget. Um, hampers or otherwise disables the library, then, then you don't want to vote for it. I mean, that, that would be an expected outcome. If you think that this budget doesn't do that and gives us, and we still have the chance to figure things out going forward, then you vote for the budget. Unless you have other, other objections. There might be other objections you have to the budget, so. So there's still time and we're not, we have not, there's no ultimatum reached. There's no, no stopping in the discussions. I don't think we had emails today back and forth. Oh, you did. We did. So, so this, I mean, it's a daily thing, right? And it, and it's, it's challenging for people not to get frustrated. I know the library board is frustrated. Um, staff is frustrated. We're, you know, we'd like to find a magic pill, but. That's unlikely. Unless the council says the number one and most important priority is the library, just figure out a solution and that, at that point. Staff will have to do what you ask us to do.
Well, Scott, I feel as though I heard, uh, council president allude to maybe not a magic pill, but at least a, a helpful pill. What's the, what's the, I'll say, I don't know if legality is the right word, but mechanism. So. Look at that and what would it take to have something bad?
I don't know. That would be something we'd have to ask staff to.
So we have a, so staff?
Staff means Josh and I and Christine and Karen and who else has been working at this point. We have not explored the legality nor the desirability of revenue enhancements. Only revenue enhancement staff has been focused on is levy. What, what ability do we have to put more levy into the library fund? So yes, there may be others. Um, uh, Mr. Rowan and I agreed that some of them are probably not worth it. There's probably more effort involved in collecting an extra two thousand dollars in revenue than there is in doing it. Plus, it may not fit the mission of the library. You know, check off on the, the bill is probably legal. I mean, you can, you can have, if you're not forcing anybody to do something, I doubt you could make an argument that, that you can't do it. And so it'd just be a question of how you market it. What does it look like? You know, does the utility then, utility billing function want four cents?
Four cents back if you, yeah.
If you, if you get a ten cent donation, I, there's all those questions, but that's not bad. It's a, it's an easy way for the community to, to signal. But it also might have negative impacts on a future capital plan, right? People feel like they've already been asked to give at the office. They don't want to give again when the library board comes back around with capital. So you got to weigh that too, like.
Yeah.
It's, what's the impact? Same with rentals of the facility or other things. There are all those things have. A list of pros and cons, which we can get involved with staff, or we can say, no, that's the library. We're letting them decide what they want to do.
My, my position has been and continues to be maybe too, too correct line, but. We give the library board money. They decide how to operate the library to what they feel is the best. We, we accept the mayor's appointments and confirm the people that can put on the library so we have a say that way. But we trust that they are going to do the best thing for the library with the funds we give them. I don't, I don't know that we should get into figuring out, you know, how they spend it. Um, it, it certainly helps to understand what, what's going on there. And I think we all kind of have had our, our conversations with the library and have a good understanding of what, what their challenges are that they face, but. I struggle with the idea that we should get involved in telling them to have two pages and three master librarians and. That's their responsibility. That's their, that's their way. And that's why I thought the, the, the. The check off on the utility bill might be a good solution to allow the library to fund themselves. Through some marketing campaigns and.
Aren't you kind of telling them what to do though, in that sense?
Telling them how to enhance the, the pot of money that they're going to get.
Right, but they're going to be doing that for the master plan. We're, we're discussing the budget that they should be getting. They've complained about having difficulties. Difficulties that include their employees, how much that they get for, um, how do I put this? Their human resources. Now, that's changed over a period of time. So I can understand why, but what we might think, what might, they might think doesn't. Match up. I can understand that. But there's other parts too. They made decisions and like, our community likes those decisions. Such as, um, forgiveness of, how do I put this? Um, people, yeah, people don't have to pay the fines like they used to. Or that's where that amount of money almost directly correlates to what I, the number I came up with. I'm not saying you have to do a librarian or, or not, I have to hire a librarian aid or not. I picked that number because it gives them the ability to pay raises, forgive debt, focus on smaller amounts, not bigger amounts. I didn't name a two hundred thousand dollar number. But I think if you get too high, you create bigger problems for the city. But if you go too low, you might end up not being able to have a functional library like we're used to. And the, the same extent.
Well, I would, I'm just, um. Well, I would, I would just, um, beyond the budget, um, they're involved in some plan, uh, big planning process, right? I'm really interested in, I, I, I can't imagine they're the only library going through, uh, going through changes. You know, like any public institution, times change and things change. I really want, um, uh, I'm looking forward to finding out how, how their ideas about transitioning to be the library of the twenty-first century. I mean, because it's, it's gonna be different, it's gonna be more online, it's gonna be, I don't, it's gonna change in all kinds of ways. And it's not gonna be the library my kids went to in the nineties. So I'm, I'm looking, it, it's part of my reluctance to, you know, essentially throw more money, put a bandaid on it. Is, I'm not sure it would fix anything. And, um, you know, just like the city has changed its, um, personnel structure and over the years with like just about every area of this, of, of the city has changed, as, as time has changed. You know, I think the library's gonna have to change too, and they get to decide how to do that.
And there is, there is a healthy aspect to like, I think we can all agree on, that the ten percent is more in the future than it is today.
What is that number against?
In actual dollars, yeah.
Yeah, in actual dollars.
So I mean, there, there is a, a lining that is still healthy there in that sense, that is good. So, well, I'll just say real quick, I appreciate, I know these are not easy discussions and they're tiring, and I can hear that. But I appreciate the willingness to keep kind of coming to the middle and keep talking. Um, I think too, council has signaled a willingness, uh, to keep talking to a point. And probably we're also signaling, I think, a very strong message that we're, we're, we're open to looking at innovative ideas when they pop up. But the innovation does have to be organic. Um, I've sat in a couple of meetings over the past couple of weeks looking at like church attendance. Church is trying to figure it out. People aren't coming back. People need different patterns in their lives. So the pandemic is ongoing in terms of disruption it causes towards people's habits of, let's say, two thousand seventeen or eighteen. I think the library is still wrestling with that too. And, um, so you know, innovation plus, uh, uh, sustainable funding and then continual conversations. I think we can stay on a, a healthy path for, for all parts.
Okay, good question. We're not, we're running out of time.
So we need to understand if the council would like to have another workshop.
On the budget?
Before your next meeting or if you wanna just have the first reading of the budget at the next meeting.
So you're gonna have the first reading of the budget.
Your respective, because of the timing we have yesterday. Look, you could choose to have a workshop the twenty-sixth of October, then you could choose to follow that up with another workshop, first meeting in November. You just need to know what to plan for. Are, does the council wanna have another workshop or do you? Roll to the council. And understand it's unlikely that we'll have a resolution to the long-term library fiscal by the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations unless we hear from council that you're not willing to pass a budget without that solution. It's the time, it would, again, lots of communication back and forth, and we're still not at a point where we can just say, here's the package, everybody is unhappy.
Scott, this is what we think is gonna happen.
If Scott Morrison's name was Kevin McCarthy, I might feel differently.
I feel like we're okay to continue on.
Yeah, and you have, it's all, you know, first reading's a public meeting out here, and so people will come and let you know what they think too. So we'll plan on that.
Has there ever, I'm sorry, um, has there ever been a meeting with the library board and city council like this in a workshop study where we can have frequent conversations? Oh, I'm, I.
No, no, you're fine, you're, I'm just catching. I don't know about ever. I'd hate to say there never is, because there may have been. I can't recall one. We've had UAB and council a couple of times. We had Park and Plan once. Do you have this, I don't think we had historic preservation. So. I don't recall library board, city council, formal meeting.
Although certainly city council, uh, can attend.
Correct, but we can't speak.
Another can speak as a public.
I mean, to be fair, when people speak and have public comment, we as council can't speak, we can't have representation. No, 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 like, we're not having dialogue with people who are speaking in public comment. So that's what I'm saying, like, where we could have a chance to have dialogue, ask questions, talk about solutions, talk about possibilities.
So, sounds like a subcommittee.
It's rarely we do that because you're kind of the master policy centers. The one with the UAB was to close the power. So it was like to end the service. It wasn't to talk about tweaking funding levels or any of those. So I think that's kind of, I, well, I'll just say in the past, some council members have not been keen on that because they feel it takes away, it leaves on a role of the council member sitting on individual commitments. But that doesn't mean that's how you guys have to operate. I just think in the past, sometimes whoever's been on the, let's say, plan commission also wants to bypass that individual's role that's gotten people not happy. Because they feel like, well, they can carry the water for the council. So you have a full, the council has a full voice in every commission. It's your rep on the board. So Jeff, Jeff is your library. I would think, you can, you can set any meetings, you can set pretty much any meetings you want. It's, there's no prohibition.
We need to close up here, but I would suggest that we direct staff to work with the library board, continue their dialogue either to the point where they come to something they can propose to us or come to an influence. And then we can make the decision about whether we need to have a joint meeting or whether we can review the information in the form of a memo or.
It doesn't have to be death before we pass this.
No, no, it doesn't have.
We need to remember that.
We don't have to fix the problem. We adjourned?
Yeah, we adjourned.
Thank you.
I have a minute?
More questions than anything else.